Pastor Sam Hooker, Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Denny Collins, please stand.
Ask you to bow women a word of prayer, all right? Father, we come to you today and Lord, we ask you for these commissioners that you would help them, Lord, as they deal with complexities, with problems, with decisions. I pray God that they might understand, just as you spoke through Joshua fat in the Old Testament, that they judge not for man, but for the Lord. And Father, we ask you that you would help them, lead them and guide them with so many things they have to deal with. And Lord, we're just going to thank you for all you do. Bless those that are in attendance in this place today, that you might get glory and honor unto yourself. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, proud.
Thank you very much. I'd like to welcome the Director of Schools, Dr. Cash, Mike Griffin, Chamber of Commerce, Disabled American Veterans, Dwight Woodcock, thank you for attending. The mayor, I believe, is with the funeral arrangements for Robert Wright tonight and will be absent at this time. I'd recognize Dan Howell for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the invitation to be with you tonight. And I want to thank Johnny Mull, I don't know if Johnny's here, thank Johnny Mull for facilitating this opportunity to make a presentation before this board or this commission. First of all, before I do that, let me just say, I would, as a citizen, I would like to commend this body for the good work that you do. In 2023, Bradley County led the state of Tennessee out of 95 counties in job creation and economic growth, and that comes only through good leadership. And you're continuing that effort as well, and I think that you should be commended. And I hope the citizens of Bradley County appreciate the hard work that you do. Sometimes it's a thankless job, but it can be a very satisfying job when you serve the people of this county and of this state. So, thank you so much. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Lauren Lumberg and her principal, Dr. Cash, and some members of the softball team to join me up here at the podium, if you would, because I think this is a very momentous occasion. And I believe, Lauren, your parents are here. I wouldn't object if they wanted to come up too. And we have some assistant coaches, don't we? And her husband. We've got everybody. We'll just have the whole congregation come up. And then, if I may, when we're finished, if I could stand in front of the deos and get a picture. But it's always a privilege of mine to recognize citizens in my district who excel. And we have a lot of citizens who do that. And then there are some who just go above and beyond. Yeah, that's good. I like to talk to yous. That's great. Thank you, Tom, for doing that. And I have presented proclamations and resolutions to a variety of people in all three counties that I represent. Presented a resolution recognizing some students in Polk County High School, for example, just not too long ago, who won a national championship in graphic design, academic scholarships, all kinds of scholarships. But there's nothing quite like a coach who touches the lives of students every day, and not just how to hit and throw a ball, field a ball, but teaches them how to be people of character and goodwill. And I think that's what is represented here today. And if you would bear with me, I'd like to read just a little bit. It's a long proclamation, and I'm not going to read it all. But there's a little bit that deserves to be read. Whereas we take great pleasure in paying tribute to those outstanding coaches who, through hard work and commitment, distinguish themselves among the storied coaches and high school programs of Tennessee. And whereas Lauren Lindberg of Walker Valley High School was recently named the Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association, T S S A, 2024 Softball Coach of the Year, an honor that truly reflects the commitment to athletic excellence displayed by Coach Lindberg and the Walker Valley Mustangs. And whereas with a distinguished coaching career spanning 13 full seasons, Coach Lindberg has led her team to two state tournament appearances, nine district championships, nine region tournaments and three sectional games while compiling a career record of 351 wins and 152 losses. If you're good at math, you know she's won 200 more games than she's lost. That's quite an accomplishment. It really is. Skipping on down, whereas her professional accomplishments aside, Coach Lindberg is most grateful for the love and support of her husband, Dr. Corey Lindberg, and her parents, Jan and Garland Hilliard. And whereas Coach Lindberg epitomizes the spirit and commitment that are characteristic of a true Tennessean, she has served with great diligence and dedication, positively influencing the lives of countless young people with her display of character and integrity. And whereas we find it appropriate to acknowledge and applaud Lauren Lindberg for her outstanding leadership as head coach of the Walker Valley High School softball team, now therefore I, Cameron Sexton, Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 113th General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, at the request of and in conjunction with Representative Dan Howell, do hereby complain that, proclaim, not complain, proclaim that we honor and congratulate Lauren Lindberg of Walker Valley High School upon being named the T S S A 2024 Softball Coach of the Year and extend to her our best wishes for much continued success both on and off the softball field. Signed by Speaker of the House, Cameron Sexton, myself, as well as Representative Kevin Raper of District 24 and Adam Lowe, the Senator for this district. Congratulations, Lauren. I'll come and present this to you. Would you like to join me so you can get in the photo? Mr. Chairman, if I may, just make one more comment.
You sure may.
I normally like to do these in Nashville, on the House floor, in front of the full legislative body, which is what we normally do. But it happens, the timing didn't work out. We were already out of session. But normally, I like to bring the recipient to Nashville, and hopefully, there'll be a next time, and we'll be able to do that. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Hopefully, she'll, this will be the first of several that we can get her to Nashville.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Lewis, is there anything the mayor had? He's, okay. Thank you very much for coming, and congratulations to Walker Valley. We will now go to reports from committees and our districts. Please turn your mic on if you're talking, and we'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, had the honor to go to the Tennessee County Service Association, Tennessee County Commission Association Conference up in Nashville. During that time, we voted on what our agenda is as the Tennessee County Commission Association, our legislative agenda for this upcoming session in Nashville. I will be providing that document to Lori later tonight, and then she'll get it out to all you guys as well, so you're aware of what the Tennessee County Commission Association voted on this week, this past week. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. Went to the meet and greet for the Republican Party with Cameron Sexton, of course, and a bunch of those guys were there, had a great time. I think Josh was there, and several people there. Also, I'd like to, our veteran that we've talked about several times, Mr. Jacob, I forget his last name, he passed away Friday. Dwight's here to speak on that tonight, I'm going to let him do that later on in the meeting here. Was on the nursing home committee meeting, first time I've been there for that. Scott Oliver and his staff do a great job over there, and I appreciate them doing that for our citizens in Bradley County that occupy our nursing home. Also, I talked to Tom Moore today, Tom Moore, Tom Collins with the Road Department. The Moore Road issue that we had, the folks wanted a three-way stop evidently, he has put up some flashing signs, some speed limit signs and things like that, with reflectors and a speed limit of 20 miles an hour to try to subdue those folks from doing the speeding or whatever they're doing there, or not really safe where the stop sign that they wanted, I think they had a petition, but anyway. And let's not forget, Thursday, I think, is the last day of early voting. The election is very, very important to us as citizens of Bradley County and the United States overall. So, whether you're Republican, Democrat, I could care less, vote. Also, would like to send condolences to Troy Maney, one of our fire guys, his sister passed away, which was a childhood friend, they lived over in the same neighborhood I did. And last but not least, in the morning at 9:00 a.m., we will have an insurance committee meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Everything's well in the 6th District. Saturday, Household Hazardous Waste Day, be from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the Bradley County Justice Center. Commissioners, come on out and get your picture made or something. Come out and show me some support. We probably have a big crowd out there, and look forward to it. That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins, please.
This district's looking well, especially Wildwood and the two-lane road on Emmon Street. That's all I have.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
That's from the 4th District there.
Commissioner Gilbert. Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to report that the Legal Legislative Committee met last week and voted a few recommendations I'm honored to present today. First, we voted unanimously to recommend amending the HCI general procedures to permit eligible organizations that have been established for a minimum of 10 years to apply for and receive hospital funds from both Bradley County HCI and the United Way HCI. The restrictions on receiving both county and United Way HCI funds was established to protect HCI funds from being used by startup organizations from solely relying on HCI to get established. This change was, will allow well-established organizations to utilize both funding bodies to further their work in our community. Mr. Chairman, I place this recommendation on the November 4, 2024 work session. That's a voting session. Yeah. All right. The next item, first of all, we don't meet as a legal legislative committee multiple times through the year. We build the concerns that we want to present, so that's why we have four in a row here. The committee also voted a couple of changes to the public water fund policy. We voted to recommend amending the HCI public water fund policy to state the following: Extensions shall be a minimum of six-inch diameter lines unless the utility provider determines that a smaller diameter is appropriate based on the current and future needs of the area. You will recall, this was an issue just a few weeks ago on a project we approved with a two-line, two-inch line. This recommendation, which I place on the November 4 voting session agenda, cleans up our policy to allow for such instances. I place this on the November 4 voting session, Mr. Chairman. Oftentimes, public water funds applications claim contaminated wells as the reason for the application. The committee voted to recommend requiring proof of contamination for applications that claim such an issue. I place this recommendation on the November 4 voting session. We also voted to recommend dissolving all ad hoc committees that have not met on the last 12 months. I place this recommendation on the November 4, 2024 voting session. Finally, lastly, we voted to recommend amending the Bradley County Commission rules of procedures to restrict the commission's ability to draft letters solely to matters directly to county business and to require all letters pertaining to functions, services or issues directly associated with the responsibilities and operations of county government, and to include a provision that allows questions regarding the authority to act be referred to the chairperson and county attorney, subject to an appeal of county commission at its next regular meetings. I place this recommendation on the November 4, 2004 voting session agenda, and note this change does not preclude county commissioners from submitting their own letters to assist the constituents. Mr. Chairman, that's the final recommendations I have. Thank you.
Is that all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to take an opportunity to recognize three individuals that were here tonight and are no longer here. It's awesome to recognize Lauren Lindberg for the accomplishments, but I want to say thank you to Mike Turner, who is here, Coach Turner's Athletic Director at Walker Valley, and also recognize Turner Jackson, who is Athletic Director of Valley Central High School. We've got two incredible athletic directors that do an awesome job, and the work that they do behind the scenes to support our schools and our coaches is phenomenal, so I'm thankful for them. Also, Jan Hilliard was here, Ms. Hilliard is Coach Lindberg's mother, and also my, one of my daughter's third-grade teachers. And I just, teachers are incredible, and she made an awesome impact on my oldest and probably one of her favorite teachers of all time. I'm thankful for her and want to publicly acknowledge her. And then finally, Pastor Sammy's here, and it always warms my heart to see him here. Sammy Hooker was my pastor at Philip High Baptist Church, and just an incredible man of faith and somebody that has meant a lot to me since I was little. So, just want to recognize those three. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, on that letter, it's waiting y'all pass there?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm sure when I pulled that letter the other week because it was a bill owed. And I don't have a problem with not writing letters for a bill owed. That's a civil matter. That really gets into a civil matter. That's between the customer and the utility district or wherever it goes to. But otherwise, if this commission wants a letter sent to somebody and has a full commission, I don't care if we have to vote on it. And I think it needs to be brought before this commission, and that shouldn't be taken out of our rules, what we can do and what we can't do when it comes to writing letters or sending letters. And I'm not for this whatsoever, unless you just, like I'd say, take it, take the part out where a man's got a bill or a family's got a bill that comes in here, and that becomes a civil matter, I think. But other than that, if we've got a letter that needs to go somewhere that we think's important, then I think it should be written from this whole commission.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Thompson, we, as a committee, review this very, very concern that you've shared there. That's really why being put in there is that the chairman with the legal advisor would help us to make that decision. So, it's just, I think the move was basically to state to the public, rather than each of us individually have to say that, to the public that we want to deal with that that's within our own authority. As we recognized the last meeting we had, we had to deal with Tall Betsy and deal with that. That's not in our authority to deal with Tall Betsy that was done in 1989. So, it's just basically to clear the air that we want to deal with only that that we're in authority for, with the exception being what you've said, is that if there is a case like that, then all that has to be done is the chairman agree exactly with you, the legal advice say that that's warranted. I think it's well-presented, as you said, but we looked at that. But I think the opportunity just to come many times to this body and present is not just to speak to us, it's to speak to other entities out in the community, and we're the sounding board for that, and then asking us to do letters, and in many times, now we did a letter, as you remember, celebrating our support for Israel. I mean, we don't have authority on that, but at the same time, our constituents, as you've said, want us to say that, and we have said that, and we all agree to that. We'd be able to do that, but it's just letting the public know that we want to deal primarily with what we have authority for and not just the spurless stuff that's out there. We'll have an opportunity to discuss that more at the next meeting.
Commissioner Hughes, please.
I guess one, my question is, I just need to ask for clarity on it, because I was on that committee, and I may have misunderstood what I heard read tonight. As you know, that last week, I'd sent a letter, requested a letter to be sent to a road superintendent, which in return, there's been signage added and so on to help those people out in that area. So, I think it was duly noted, but if I understood correctly tonight, it doesn't actually stop that, or does it stop that, where if we wanted to send a letter to an elected official?
As Chairman, as the committee can say, would like to say here, I don't think it stops that.
Well, there's something we can still do.
Procedure, the procedure that would be in place is just basically say, I've been asked to do this, is it appropriate? The chairman looks to the group, and the group says, yes, let's go for it. But that's part of our, you know, we work with the road department consistently, and that's part of our.
Which, to be quite honestly, after we had the letter, I actually called him up and gave him a heads up. I said, listen, you know, just explain to him what it was actually about. And he was all right with that. He was, had no problem with all, but I feel, my main reason was thinking that that petition, he would like to see it. It was several people that lived in that area that he knows as well as I do, so I thought it'd be nice for him to see and not be blindsided by something.
And you can do a letter saying the entire commission supports you, if you want to do that as well with us. So, there's all kind of.
And that was the question. I just wanted to make sure it didn't send us, have us, and it's my misunderstanding, honestly, during the committee, because I was under the impression we could not request a letter, but through the full commission, where we could go on. But the way you're explaining it right now, I have no problem.
I think that's the game plan.
Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. So, if we want to send a letter, and the chairman, along with our county attorney, will decide if that letter is appropriate, deemed appropriate to send, is that correct?
Well, any, any good chairman will understand that if the body wants that done, then that would be done. So, I don't think it's excluding that the group would be saying they want this letter to go.
I'm just trying to ask, so that, so the chairman and the county attorney would determine if the letter is purview to what this county commission does to be able to send?
It's part of the authority of our.
What is the appeal process if the chairman and the county attorney decide that it is not in the purview? And there are six people or seven people, whatever, on this commission that want it sent? And I'm just, I'm not saying chairman cry, but for, we're changing the rules of the county commission, so for future chairman, for future county commissions down the road, what is the appeal process to overturn a unilateral decision made by a chairman or by the county attorney in this process?
I could be wrong, but I do think that, as has been said by our senior members, this commission can, on eight votes, do what it wants to do within its authority.
So, then we would have to bring it up in that voting session and request a vote on it?
Is that in agreement?
Suspend the rules and then request to vote on it?
Yeah.
Just for clarification on, I just want to know what we're voting on.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Good question.
Anyone else? Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. Speaking of elections, they're going very well. You probably have heard the numbers, but just as of tonight at 6 o'clock, 2,608 people voted today for a grand total of 29,180. That is a record, but we still have tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday for early voting, and then obviously, Election Day. And just a reminder, always good to know that we budget about $45,000 to $46,000 to the Election Commission per election. So, our taxpayers have already paid for it, so I encourage everyone to get out and either take advantage of early voting, 9 to 6, or on Election Day, 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. Also, real quick, Mr. Chairman, speaking of Turner Jackson, he allowed me to be on the chain gang this past Friday at the Bradley Cleveland Football Game, and that was a lot of fun. I appreciate him letting me do that. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Alford, please.
The chain gang.
Chain gang found familiar for you, Mr. Blake.
Finally found it. I've been working on the chain gang.
Yeah.
I've been very, but listening to you talk about it, but this district, 2nd District's doing well. We did lose probably a real pillar of the community in the Charleston area. Robert Wright passed away this past weekend, and I don't guess there's too many men in Bradley County any finer than he was. So, I'd like to send condolences to his family from the 2nd District, and I guess probably from a lot of the commissioners also. Super guy, nice guy. Other than that, I just wonder what the city has against us voting, because they got all this work going on out here, and you can't get to the poll to vote. If I was a, they had all this time to do a road out here, and then they waited right now to do it. It's just beyond me to block all the roads off, and you can't get in here to vote. It's ridiculous, in my opinion, why they couldn't wait a week till early voting was over or done it before. But anyway, it's part of the city's projects, and the other part is, they paved their road around here, but the word that gets the worst, more use than anyone's, this right here beside the annex town with that 2nd Street, 1st Street. 1st Street, it's the worst road in Bradley County, and they hadn't paved it yet. So, maybe one of these days, they'll get to that too. Bobby, if you can just help us out there, you seem to be able to get things done with the city. Appreciate you.
Is that it, Commissioner Alford?
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I had to report on, Commissioner Ledford's already reported on it, so I'm done. Thank you.
Well, we, I have gotten or received two phone calls from residents out in 1st District, although I'm 2nd, but they're thrilled to death with those flashing lights. The people are very happy that someone listens to them. Commissioner Beatty, please.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
A point of privilege here, in our legal legislative meeting, there was nobody in this building but us. That's one of those meetings that call at a time, and everybody's gone. And then I see an opportunity, and I knew the opportunity, to see in the newspaper exactly what happened. Grant, you must be clairvoyant, or you must have been watching up there, but it was well, well done. Thank you very much. That helped me put together four major things to be presented. Also, our legislative administrator is a tremendous help to all of us to get done the things we need to do, and I appreciate both of y'all. There was nobody in this building but us and this leadership over here, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate you for making that possible. Thank you.
And now move along to the agenda items. Agenda item A, Commissioner Martin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing, this is going to bring up HCI. First thing is, FYI, the HCI committee met a week or two ago, and they have elected a new chairman, Dr. Paul McCord is the new chair of the HCI committee. So, he'll be running the committee over the next couple of months. And with that, they have asked the commission, since, as you well know, we're at 3/4 of a million to grant out this year, which is good, for some guidance from us. One of the things I was going to bring up a couple of weeks ago is some devices that are needed by the EMS department. As you know, Adam wrote and received some funding for the Lucas device, life-saving devices. devices, but not enough funding for all of our ambulances. I think we can all agree that all of our ambulances need to have the equipment, because you never know what the call is going to be and what ambulance is being called and stuff like that, so if the HCI wants some guidance, I would like to, I don't know if we have to vote on this or whatever, this is kind of a new thing, but I would hope that, you know, definitely falls within the health, welfare, and quality of life, I mean, these are life-saving devices. I've asked Adam here in a second to give some statistics, we already have some operational now, and I believe they would have been used, but I would like to, as a commission, I guess, we have to vote on this, yeah, if we put this on the November 4, Mr. Chairman, as an agenda item to give quote-unquote guidance to the HCI committee, I'd appreciate that, but I think it's something we need to do. The number, from what I'm gathering, is about 120,000 to 125,000 for these devices, and we're going to also get extra batteries, these, you never know if you're on I-75 and there's an accident, and these devices have to keep going, use a lot of battery, switch out a battery, put another battery in, it just makes sense. So with that, Adam, if you have some statistics on the, I mean, we've already used, I think these devices have been called and used, so I appreciate it, thanks, Adam.
We, we received funding from a state grant about four months ago, and in the three months that we've had them in service, we have had almost 70 calls where we've had the opportunity to use these devices in the field. Six more will allow us to put them on every vehicle that we could possibly have that would respond to a call of this nature, and so it would be greatly appreciated and well-used.
So I have the advantage, if you will, of being married to an R M for twenty-some-odd years, and I told her about these devices, and she was like, you, you've got the others. As you know, our EMS personnel are trained to do it, but as human beings, they're sitting there doing the compressions, whatever, after 10, 15 minutes, they're going to get tired. The other thing, I didn't even think about this until it was brought to my attention, is obviously this machine is going to have a constant rate, so it's done right, so I think that's all pretty cool, so I appreciate all consideration and look forward to next week, thanks.
Chairman. Commissioner Olaford.
Who, did you mention, what was the price?
To get these devices, for all of our ambulances, I was told 120,000 to 125,000.
That's for six?
Is it?
Not a piece?
Well, yeah.
Total.
Whoa, wait a minute, is that total?
Total is six and some extra batteries and stuff like that.
Are you suggesting we take that out of our ARC money or HCI?
HCI.
Then he needs to apply for a grant for HCI, okay.
Yeah, but the HCI committee has asked us for quote-unquote guidance, so I'm going to give them guidance.
Anyone? Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just to mention these devices, I've, as EMS chairman, I've had the opportunity to see these devices like firsthand and look at them and see how they work. Not only do they, as Commissioner Blake has said, provide constant and correct rhythm for people with over 70 calls in the past, what is it, four months, I guess, Adam? Three months, over 70 calls for people in our community. The other side of this too is, is that it, it helps and protects our employees at the EMS department from, whether it's thrown-out shoulders, it's hurt backs, whatever it might be, by having it to do the constant rhythm from driving possibly from Cleveland all the way to Hamilton County to go into Erlanger, wherever it might be, or even just driving from outside in the county from Charleston all the way down to the hospital. The other thing that this does is it also allows the people who are in the back of the ambulance to be able to have free use of their hands. So while this device is working and giving constant chest compressions, they're able to continue to work on the patient and continue to provide the best care that Bradley County EMS always does. That's all I have.
If I could interject too, there are a lot of really positive unintended consequences. By adding just the eight that we put in place, our previous response protocols were to send two trucks, two full ambulances, and a supervisor vehicle to a call, to a cardiac arrest call. By having just one of these devices on a vehicle that's responding, it allows us to keep one of those trucks in service, which I think we would agree, if you know anything about our call volume, is really important, and only send one truck, including a supervisor. It is also, as Commissioner Rogers mentioned, if you've never done actual CPR, and I don't mean training on a dummy, but actual CPR, it's incredibly exhausting, whether you're in shape or not, and just two to three minutes of it can, done correctly, can be, can be really exhausting, and so it already has, if you, if you run into one of our EMS employees, ask them, they are absolutely thrilled to have these on the trucks, and from a service standpoint and a quality and level of care standpoint, these additional six devices will, will be a huge improvement. We're fortunate, not many services can afford to have even a handful of these in service, and the fact that we've got eight, and hopefully we'll be able to add more on all of our trucks is, is an incredible accomplishment and something that the county should be proud of.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's all you have? Okay, we'll move along to communication from the audience, I'll recognize and allow five minutes, anyone wishing to speak. Is this where we have the man from E A B on the?
Hello, my name is Dwight Woodcock, and I am the third district commander of the American Legion Cleveland, here is my home post. I have seventeen posts in eight different counties. Two of you, Chairman Crye and Chairman Ledford, know how to reach me personally, if anyone has a veteran issue in your district, if it's overwhelming, I'm the guy to call, I'll be glad to get to the bottom of it for you. With that said, the last few weeks or so, Jacob Barlow has been a topic of conversation here in the room. I want to thank each and every one of you for your due diligence and looking at his best well-being at a difficult time in life. On last Friday at 12:07, he expired in Murfreesboro, to which he found peace, he's over at Companion now, with a funeral on Halloween at 1:30 in the afternoon at National Cemetery. We're bringing in a lot of people to give him a lot of proper veteran support. With that said, at the Bradley County Veterans Home, I realize you have little to oversight at best at that, but I want to thank you for the letter to our national and state legislator of your concerns for the well-being of our veterans, and it is my job to advocate for those who are voiceless or don't know how to express themselves. So everything you do, I am so grateful. Commissioner Ledford, thank you for the opportunity, when I spoke to you this morning, to offer me the opportunity to come here tonight. With that said, in our community or your districts, does anyone have any questions of me?
Anyone have any question? I have, I have a question, it's not directly related to the death of the veteran, but do you know, or have you been told, the occupancy level of the veterans' home?
I believe it to be 106 or 108.
It's 100% fill?
No, that's the occupancy they can have, I believe, I believe they have 48 or 54, it's, I'm getting both numbers either way, so it's right at 50% capacity right now.
That's, that's amazing, the grand opening was June of last year.
You would be surprised that two years ago, I was at a Veterans Coalition meeting in Chattanooga, and the director of the VA for the state of Tennessee was there, and you all just happened to have an article in there about the opening of the veterans' home, and he did not even know it was there. So that broke my heart, and we had to come to Jesus about that, and I gave him a little bit more clarity.
I'm not surprised, being a veteran, I can assure you, I'm not surprised at all. The other issue I have, apparently all the federal and regulations on payment have been resolved, and it's a matter of hiring the employees, but I, I find a polling that we've got 108 plus or minus rooms, and we're down, you're saying in the 50s, I thought it would, might have been a little 60s, but that's, that's really dragging it out.
It certainly is.
Thank you.
I do.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, yes, sir.
I set up the other night, woke up one o'clock and went and wrote this down. If you'll, let me just read it. So for the issue of some of my colleagues here on the right, on the writing of letters, I think it's a great tool for us commissioners to have at the local level, as for writing the letter on behalf of Jacob Bowlen. When I stood there, he said all I wanted to do is just make a difference for someone else that they didn't have to endure what I did. Rest in peace, Sergeant, First Sergeant Jacob Bowlen. He passed October 25th, a few days later from his arrival to a facility. For the letter that this commission wrote to the state level, elected officials, was simply a great tool for their toolbox. As far as the time it takes for, takes up of our time, it was well worth it. Thank y'all for writing that letter.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the audience would like to speak? All right, we'll move along to the upcoming events, Insurance Committee tomorrow at nine AM here at the courthouse. Spirits, Legends, and Lore, October 29, 6:30 to 9:30 at the courthouse square. Halloween Block Party, October 31, 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM downtown. Household Hazardous Waste Day, November 2, 8 AM to noon at the Justice Center. Veterans Appreciation Concert, November 2, 4:30 PM. Veterans Retreat, Graysville. Finance Committee, November 4, at 11:30 AM here at the courthouse.